So that was problematic. We wrote to the governor. And from her comments today at her press conference, I didn't detect any real action for us down here. The towns of Kittery, York, Agunkwit are moving to close their beaches and parks. Fort Foster will be closed tomorrow. Agunkwit is closing all of their beaches and marginal trails tomorrow. Kenny Bunkport are working through their meetings tonight with their boards of selectment. Old Orchard Beach is not taking action at this time. So in sum, we are somewhat frustrated by the governor's actions or inactions for what we see as a different set of circumstances down here. We have so many day trippers and potential seasonal openings of cottages and campgrounds that we see an influx every week of people coming up here from areas of New England that are vastly more infected than we are. And that is not to condemn these people. It is something that we think should be possibly monitored and controlled more.
Well, if I may, to that end, no one wants to close the beaches. No one wants to close the restaurants. No one wants to close a hotel. No one wants to go in and impose these sorts of things. And no one wants to tell our seasonal residents that you're not, you know, we're not trying to send a message of you're not welcome here. This is just a bad time. I was reading an article the other day that said in Maine, the entire state of Maine, we have 360 ventilators available and 71 ICU beds. So this isn't about, you know, people. This is about pure math, pure and simple. We just don't have the resources, no matter how you shake it, to absorb this influx. I feel like I'm watching a bad horror movie. We're sitting here, we're going, no, no, no. We all know where it's going to go, but nothing's coming of it. No one's stopping it. We have no problem putting Maine people out of work. But when it comes to, you know, doubling our town's population, the state's not helping us in that regard. And I just don't believe that there isn't some way of curbing it. I just, I have a hard time believing that.
And John, to your point, it's not just doubling. It's, we go up five times in size in the summer, and that's going to come sooner rather than later. So I think now's the time that we have to act. We have, we have no choice but to close the beaches now because every surrounding town's doing it. So what are we? We're now the safe haven where everyone comes to go to our beach because we're the only beach that's open. I mean, our hand's been forced now. I was in favor of closing it before now, but now I think we have to. There's no other choice now. And to the point that the governor said that we can't close borders, that just makes me mad because that's not true.
How do I say something?
You're saying something right now, Karen.
Okay, thank you. You know that I wasn't for closing the beaches. And I, and the reason why I wasn't for closing the beaches was simply because a lot of our own residents, it's the only place they can go walk. They can spread out on the beach. And they can't walk on the roads because the chances of being hit by a car are a heck of a lot more than catching coronavirus on the beach for them. So we're forcing them not to be able to walk anywhere, not to stay healthy. And, and I just have this feeling that just because we're closing the beaches, you still think that people aren't going to come up and open up their cottages? They're not going to still come up here? I, you know, I question whether that's going to work. I agree with Sean that because Kittery, York, Agunkwit, you know, they're all closing. We really have no choice now. We don't have any choice but to close because we would be exactly what you said, the safe haven for, for people to come to. I'm so sad that it's reached this point on this. You know, how can we keep our own people healthy and, and safe? You know, to be able to walk on their own beach? And anyway, it's just sad. I agree with you. Nobody wants to close, but I think right now we really have no choice.
And I agree. And the underlying problem, just to reiterate from my, my personal standpoint on it, is the state government is failing us right now. They are setting us up for catastrophe. We're taking mild steps that are essentially feel-good measures. But if we're going to do this, if we're being told social distance, you know, quarantine, self-quarantine, then let's do this. Let's do this before the financial impacts become too great on the community where we drag this out and turn it into a major, not just a public health crisis, but a public health catastrophe. These, the exponential math is not working in our favor. We're getting closer to June when everybody wants to come up here. So what are we going to go in and tell everybody in May and June? Close your restaurant, close your hotel. Sorry, everybody's got to go into a two-week quarantine. People just aren't going to do that. And that's the fact that matters. They're not going to be willing to do that. And there's no reason they should have to. It's March. We've known this is coming. We've known it's here. We need to really push the button.
We need to rip the Band-Aid off and do it now.
That's right. And when I go to New Hampshire-
Because of the long, long, won't work.
That's right. They talked about, the governor has cited that as constitu-, it's a constitutional issue. She can't close the borders. Well, I call Milwaukee because if I go to New Hampshire, I can't buy a gun. That's a right that's protected in the U.S. Constitution, but the state guidelines mandate that I'm not able to do that on a state level from state to state. We're in a state of emergency. And explicitly in the powers that legislator gave her, it says that she has the ability to control the flow of people within the borders. So to me, it's just a political cop-out. We're dragging our feet and this, we're going to watch it, you know, day by day and week by week. We don't, we either do it or we don't. You know, if one person comes into contact with five, five more, 25, keep going. It doesn't, it doesn't take long. And we're not testing everybody. The state of Maine doesn't even have tests. I mean, they can't afford them.
And I'm deeply, deeply disappointed that the governor didn't close our beaches herself today because she does have the authority to be able to do that and mandate it up and down so that, you know, we're not doing it one by one painfully.
Can I just ask, can I get a question? I know Sean wasn't finished just a minute ago. Can you go with your, Sean's pretty smart about, he's a constitutionalist. So can we make sure that you finish that point about the constitution, Sean?
Yeah, my point is a little different than John's because John's talking about interstate commerce, which is different than interstate travel. The constitution does protect the fact that you can travel between states. That is something that's true. But during a public health emergency, there has been Supreme Court cases, which then becomes constitutional law, that you can stop the, the governor does have the power to stop the flow between states. You were talking about in states, you know, when, what you referenced. Between states, she can close the borders. It's been done before with Texas and Louisiana during the yellow fever outbreak, and it was upheld by the Supreme Court. So it's kind of frustrating that she's spreading false information right now in a cop-out to not do her job and to protect us, especially in southern Maine, where we are densely populated. She made the point that Maine's special because we have social distancing naturally imposed. Sure, that may be true up in the county, but I mean, not in the summer in Wells when you have 50,000 people cramming into, I don't know what, we have 9,000 square miles here? I don't know what it is exactly, but that's a really densely populated area. So I mean, it's just not true. And she's not doing the right thing for all of Maine. She's just thinking about the area where she lives and where she's governing.
And so all our restaurants are closed. Everything's going to be closed if they, if, and I'm not trying to marginalize them and make them sound like they're not people because they are. And I really, this doesn't sit well with me overall, but I think what we need to do is clear. But what are these people going to do when they come up here and there's no restaurants or anything open? The few places that are open are going to be flooded with people, once again, with finite resources. Our elderly are going to be, you know, affected the most by this, I feel, because it's hard, some of these folks have a hard time finding someone to get them down there if they're on limited time. You know, if the stores are constantly jammed, it's putting them in a bad spot.
If I could jump in next, just FYI for the, for the board. I did speak with Leah Rach and our attorney on the way over here. The good news is, and I've been just as vocal as everyone else about our lack of leadership coming out of governor's office. But to that end, this coming Thursday, there are four people. One, the only one that I know for sure is Kate Dooford from MMA, that will be taking information that we're going to talk about tonight as to what the top three or four items are, whether it's closing beaches, postponing the opening of summer seasonal cottages, those type of issues that through our attorney will go to Kate. And then before the governor, we will have an audience of what our concerns are and what she needs to be acting on. So there, there is no guarantee of any action whatsoever. But I, I agree with everybody in regards to the protection of folks and the closure of our beaches. But I would like to say, what exactly does that mean? Because we have finite resources and whether the governor herself wants us to limit things or do things, or whether we vote on something to ban something, there is very finite resources for us to enforce all of these things. So as long as we understand that we could close the beaches, but if people aren't congregating, if they're not, if they're keeping their social distancing, our police force is not going to be down at that beach citing people if we close them. So as long as it's understood, because it may be symbolic, but I agree with it. And I think we should be moving forward.
I think it's, I think it has, it has to be-
That's what it is. We need to send a message that we're closed for business. We're not ready for tourists to come up here. That's what it, it's no more than that. It's not like we're going to have police officers walking down the beach. That's not something that we, we ever want to see. But it's about, you know, we are not ready for people to come up right now. We are just not, we're not, we don't have the resources to deal with the pandemic spreading more so than Maine already has.
Or the, or the offices that are going to be down beach monitoring everything. We have, you know, they have their own work to do here. We don't, that's just an added burden that we can't, we can't afford and we can't have them to be doing.
So jump into another point. So both Portland and Brunswick now have, I don't, I don't want to say ignored the governor, but went out on their own. Brunswick has gone to a, I think it's called shelter in place in Brunswick. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, if that's where they went to. Portland went to a stay-at-home, basically. Again, symbolically, we could say something like that, just stay at home. We're not, look, people are getting carried away with the, both the term of shelter in place and stay at home. They think that means you're not allowed out and, you know, Shabbat and Bayas are going to come, drive down and arrest you as soon as they see you come out of your house. That's not, it doesn't mean that at all. It's just making another symbolic thing, saying, you know, unless you have to, don't go hang out at the grocery store and talk to your friends. Don't go, unfortunately, go play basketball. You know, those things are what they're trying to say. And, you know, I almost think if you're going to go symbolic, you go with something like that that says, hey, people, I strongly suggest that you stay home unless you have these things you have to do. Going for a walk in your, you go for a walk in our neighborhood four times a day. You know what I mean? In our little neighborhood here. So, and that's all good. We don't hardly see anyone, so it's fine. But I, I think, I think what people are saying is that, you know, we need to do this to, I'm all about saving, now, I was, used to be May and June. Now I'm all about saving June, July, and August for our businesses. That's, that, I, we need that. We have to have that. And I disagree with everyone that's starting to say we can reopen already. There's not a scientist or a doctor that has said, that's right. Again, I just, I think we need to do this to save us. Because if we lose the, those three months, I just feel bad for what we're going to see in this town.
Right, I agree.
I don't think that we need even a statewide two-week quarantine. I feel that, you know, to the point that Maine is able to social distance and, you know, shelter in place, to me, that would mean when you're, you know, out of work or done doing whatever you have to do, just go home, like you said, no social events. But the issue, once again, I think the big thing that I see is just that, it's that influx of people that we get. Other than that, I think we would be fine up here. I don't think we would have a huge problem. I think that everybody that I've seen in town has, and, and the area towns have been doing a great job of it, taking it very seriously. And there's a couple of isolated incidents I've seen where people are kind of, don't know what it's all about, but I, it's just that influx of people. So, you know, we don't have the power to address that symbolically. I mean, I guess we do, but it's, anything else to me is just a feel-good measure, and that's scary. Why, it's-
But so is the closing of beaches a feel-good-
No, I know.
A feel-good measure. It doesn't, it doesn't change anything. I mean, we're not going to, there's no enforcement to it. I, I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not encouraging anyone to enforce it. I, you know what I mean? But I think it is symbolic, and I think it does say to people, stay home, don't come up here right now. You know, the governor did at least say that today when asked. I was, I was tweeting at a reporter, trying to get him to ask a couple of questions and, about the beaches, and he said she had already answered that. I, she did not. I told him, no, she didn't. She just said that people should stay home. She was asked if summer residents or dual residents should come up right now if they're not here. And she said, her answer was, no, they shouldn't. But there was no, I guess, forcefulness to it. It was just no, they shouldn't. You know, but I also don't want, some of the things we're seeing right now on, on social messaging is that, you know, people are getting attacked for being here, but they own the place. I mean, they normally come in, in February, they normally come in March, and they've come, they own the house. It's, it, you know, I'd struggle with the fact that they own a house, and you're telling them they can't be here anymore, or they, you know, when do you set that line? It's, I don't know. That's a really tough decision. I'll, I'll tell you a quick story, and Carl has one too. I have a niece that's living at the beach house right now because she was in Louisiana, and her teaching job ended, and because of the school year ended for them. And they came to her and said, hey, if you, if you can get out of here, we'd like you to get out of here because we can give your house to four nurses who want to stay here. So she called and said, can I stay at the beach house? She lives here normally. I mean, she's a Mainer. She's not like a, she just happens to teach in Louisiana because that's where she went. And, and so she's going to be here, and she's got New York plates. So she's going to get harassed every time she walks into Shop and Save. But she has the right to be here. I, you know, I struggle with that. She's trying to do the right thing, is going to volunteer whatever things we need and do stuff like that. You know, Carl's dealing with his dad and his sister's up here, trying to help with his dad. And she's, so she's going to drive around in Massachusetts plates. Guys, it's, Wells doesn't need people to run around and yell at people for being here. You know, we're asking them to stay away, but don't take it into your own hands. It's, it's just, there's, there might be a great reason for people to be-
There might be a reason, and we're all in it together here.
Right.
That's it. We don't, we shouldn't be going around. I mean, I, I feel like Maine as, as a whole is much better than that. We shouldn't be going around harassing our neighbors. These people are our neighbors, and maybe they're snowbirds. Maybe they lived here their entire lives and they moved down to Florida for the tax incentives with their retirement. You know, to the other end of that, though, if you do come up here, I feel that you have a responsibility to this community if this is where you're going to shelter in place, that you owe it to this community to be responsible. And if you came from New York City, impose a two-week self-quarantine and stay in the house. Don't go out, don't go out for coffee, don't go out around the area's stores and businesses or anything like that. Stay in your house and see if you have symptoms and signs. If you have a tickle in your throat or a fever, stay home. That's the decent thing to do, but that's not just out-of-staters. That's people in this area too. And I will tell you, prior to the governor issuing the directive to close the restaurants, I saw plenty of locals packing local bars, not taking this seriously. And I was disappointed because, you know, at what point do we start saying, hey, this, you know, all right, now, my grandfather's sick, now it's serious to me? Don't wait for it to get to that point. Take this seriously. Everybody owes it to their neighbor to at least take that, and it's not that hard to do. And it's just plain, that's good old-fashioned decency.
Well, if I can jump in and follow up on that. You know, folks at home have to understand that locally here, without much guidance coming from the state, we're doing all we can, the best we can with the tools that we have to work with. So far, on a very positive note, I think we've done a tremendous job. We've made sure our fuel tanks are full. We've, we've protected our people as much as we can. We've kept the town hall functioning as best we can under the circumstances. But people have to understand irrespective of what we vote on, what we proclaim to put in place, what we vote on. For me, it comes down to a social responsibility. You're either going to do the right thing or you're not. And those people that choose to do the right thing, thank you, it's appreciated. We're all in this together, as you heard. And, and, you know, we, we want to move this thing forward and get past it. And those people that, it doesn't matter what we're going to proclaim or vote on or put in place, if they choose not to take it serious, there's not a whole heck of a lot that we can do. We just hope that responsible people do the right thing. And that's pretty much what this board, I think, is alluding to. If you need to come and you need to shelter here, you know, try to bring some, some of your own goods with you. Trying to tell people that they, if they've owned the house here for 40 years, not to come, I think is very difficult at best. And again, social responsibility to do the right thing by washing your hands and all the factors that hopefully can curtail this because what we vote on doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. And whether it's symbolic or not, I think we need to take those steps and do it. But again, it, it comes down to the individuals. If we want to beat this thing, then collectively it starts with you. And, and it only gets better as more and more people get on the bandwagon and follow through with doing the right thing.
Now, and just throwing it out there for food for thought along these lines, since I don't think we've talked about it yet, and correct me if I'm wrong, but can we, if the, the, I saw it mentioned in a piece of paper here or an email about the seasonal facilities that open in May when folks, what if we bumped that back to June and then gave them another month on the other end of it? Is that something that we could do?
I think they open in April. I think they open in April, and, and we'd have to bump it to May. I think, I think it's in April.
No, I think, I think May 1st, isn't it, or the end of April is usually when they let them move up to those places. I think the water's turned on in April.
Yeah, the, well, the campgrounds are until May.
Right, I thought like the three-season cottages was, but I'm, I could be totally wrong. Maybe it's just the water, but-
I, I think the water gets turned on in April, and they can come in on May 1st or the beginning of May.
That's, that's one of the hot topics that I talked to Leah, our attorney, that's going to be before the governor about doing, getting some guidance and assistance on that so that it's not us doing it for a month and somebody else doing it for two weeks. I don't know the outcome, but I'm not real excited about what the outcome's going to be, but at least we're going to have an audience with questions like this for the governor. But I would think in my conversation with Leah, that moving it, whether it's two weeks or a month, wouldn't, wouldn't be a bad idea, and I think we can do it without much fanfare.
I think, I think we wait until next Tuesday. We have a meeting next, we're going to do this every Tuesday. I think we wait and see what the governor says on that one. Can, is there anyone here meeting John or Joe that can tell me, how many of those do we have? How many, like, how many actual units? Like, just so people understand what we're talking about, could be the influx of people. If, like, Summer Village and, and I can't think, that's the only one I could think of, the name of it. It's not, I'm not-
History, yeah. Glass, sea glass. All of those are the condo motels.
You know how many, does anyone-
I think it's easy to say 1,000 or better. And then if you add the campgrounds in, you got a lot more.
That's a lot of people coming in from places that are much worse off than we are right now. I mean, by then, we might be worse. I hope not, but I'm just saying, you, you're talking about people that are coming in from, you know, Boston's getting worse, New York's terrible. You know, wherever they're coming from, we got over 1,000 people coming into town that are different. Not different, but different, different type of citizen right now for us. I, I think it's, we have to at least table this to hear what the governor says, I can just imagine, and then come back to it on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that. We don't want to, you know, wait to see what she says because it should, they should be doing it in the first place. My, my thought on that, once again, just to reiterate for any folks that may be listening that own one of these seasonal places, again, this is not a hostile act, and it's not that we don't appreciate you, you know, coming up here, respect you. It's just, once again, it's a math, math game, or not math game, but a math equation. And it would be irresponsible of us with the finite resources we have to host you and not be able to provide you with the adequate quick care in a bad scenario as it, as it is right now and could turn into worse, hopefully not, but-
But what are we waiting for the governor on? Because, I mean, are we actually going to hear anything? Or are we just delaying a week? What, act on now?
Well, I would say if we don't hear from her next week, we just act. Because, yeah, once again, I got, I have a, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and I have a newborn here. And I'm getting frustrated at the lack of an action because every day I come home, I have, I strip all my clothes off and I throw them out in the garage so the kids don't go touch them. I wash my hands, and I have to be absolutely paranoid about this because, you know, we're just, we have people coming in and out. We have 8.6 million people in New York City in a 300 and some odd square foot, or not square foot, square, square foot, yeah, square mile area. And then in Maine, we have 1.3 million, I believe it is, in about a 33,000 square mile area. So the math on that, if you figure, the exponential math on that amount of people, 8.6 million moving around in that small of an area, and how many infections there are, and how many people are going to come up and travel the interstate? And then all the places they stop in between? It's not, not, not a good equation, not good for any of us. It's not good for our grandparents, for our parents, kids, it's not good.
If I, if I could interject at this point, is everyone on board with the closure of the beaches? And if so, if, I'll take a motion to do just that.
I make a motion that we go along with the closing of the beaches as of noon time tomorrow, March 25th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. Thank you for that.
I'd also make a motion that we recommend a stay-at-home order for the town.
I think, I think we should recommend that. I think that's something at least they can hear from us that we're, that we're following up and we're saying that we're recommending that you stay at home. If you have to go out, you know, be very careful, but if you don't have to go out, stay home. I mean, and I think that would be nice to have us request that.
Yeah, and I think it, I think you want to keep the wording of stay at home, not shelter in place or social distancing because they're unfamiliar and they're unclear terms for a lot of people. When you say stay at home, it's clear what you mean.
It's pretty clear what you said. Stay at home unless you have to get out.
Exactly. It's for essential travel only, for, for essential needs.
Right. What? Do you want a motion for that? Recommend it, right?
He motioned it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero again, thank you. And just, again, we reiterate that if you need to go out, this does not mean that if you do leave and you go out that the police officers aren't going to be pulling you over and dragging you off. If you have to go out, if you have doctor's appointments, if you, if you need food supplies and whatnot, you're still allowed to go out. It's just a recommendation that we minimize our social contact.
Right. I think it's putting our belief that these people can be responsible enough to be protective of their families and others and stay home unless they have to go out.
And I just have a general question. I don't know if any of us here can answer it, but it might be a question for Leah. But what power do we have if we do want to close down hotels, motels, Airbnbs, VRBOs, any of that stuff? If that's something that we want to consider, what, what do we even have as a power there?
This is John. I'll have that answered for you tomorrow for next Tuesday.
My, my only struggle with that, and I could see that happening, but I wish it would happen because I, I hate that we penalize our hotel owners when other towns don't, and then Agunkwit's full and Kenny Bunk's full, or whoever. I, I don't mind it. What I'm saying is I wish that would be another thing that our governor could do for us.
Right, but I mean, with the beaches, we didn't do anything until other people did it.
I know, I know.
Wells was the first to act on the schools, and what did the whole state do?
Yeah, you're right.
I, I think it's really no different than telling the water district not to turn the water on for the campgrounds and cottages for another month or two, you know? Do we have that authority?
Can you make sure that with Leah before we do that? In person, I would rather hear from her.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure that we can legally do it.
Yeah, she'll be with us next week.
That's a hot-button item and whatnot, but I'm going to defer to waiting till we get some more information on that before I would even consider something like that for discussion. So I want to table that until, actually, as to what we can and can't do because there's, as Tim alluded to earlier, there's a whole lot of people that, for justification, for being in town, and I don't want them to have to go elsewhere if they need a place to stay. Anything else?
No.
No.
I got to say Kevin Shabbat's daughter is the best part of this whole thing right now.
Guys, I just, I have one question that came in on Facebook for clarification. Does the beach closing include the parking lots to the beaches?
I, I think you just leave the, I don't want to gate those because I think, I, I don't mind a guy grabbing a, or a nice, a couple grabbing their, their sandwich at a take, a takeout sandwich, because the restaurant's open and, and sitting in the parking lot
Because the restaurant's open and and sitting in the parking lot in their car, watching the water or watching the seals on, you know, I mean, and and I'm not sure how you could just close them down anyway, because. The only ones that have gates are, correct me if I'm wrong, someone Eastern Shore has a gate, but you can't turn around. You you're going to get stuck. I think the gross lot is blocked off right on Drake's Island anyway.
Gross lot has a gate, the jetty lot has a gate and Wells. Eastern Shore has a gate.
So your Mile Road Playground wouldn't be blocked, your Forbes. You know, you wouldn't be blocked and then your Gold Ribbon Drive, you wouldn't be blocked. So, you know. Again, that would be a symbolic gesture, but then I don't want a police officer to have to go down every five minutes.
Yeah, I'll wait.
And I don't think people sitting in their car were looking at the beach is a bad thing.
I think as long as the messaging is clear that the beaches are not open and Wells is not open for business right now. That's that's all we need to send a message. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I also don't want us to have a parking problem on side streets and on people's people's driveways that aren't maybe home or. It could open Pandora's box to a host of other issues that we, again. We don't have the necessary time to be dealing with, so I would leave the parking lots open.
I wouldn't want to close the parking lots. I don't want to close the parking lots.
All right. That topic. Moving on then to our second item, which is a rescheduling of postponed hearing. Regarding a consent agreement to resolve a town beach right way or right of way encroachment between the town and David G. Russo Jr. On right away number two on Moody Beach. I have a motion, please.
I move to reschedule the public hearing to the next selectmen's meeting. Is that we want to do that on the first of, is it the 7th of April?
Well, we're we're meeting every week, but.
So you want to do this for you want to do.
I I would say April 7th would be fine.
Okay. I make a motion to reschedule the public hearing to April 7th in the. Till April 7th.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That was John McLeod on the second that sent me 205 zero vote.
One question that did come up before we go too far beyond that is how is the word going to get out? One that beach closes and.
The. The question. We're going to get out. The other area towns are are working together to get the words out word out on their beaches and and will include ourselves in that one. We'll do a press release second. We'll get signage down at the beach. And we'll continue to promote social media with this information.
John, you sounded like Joe Walsh there for a second, just so you know. Your sound was a little weird.
Thank you, Coach.
Yeah.
Our next item is rescheduling and discussion of the informational session of the 2020 Parking and Traffic Study Report.
I move to one reschedule public hearing on amending chapter 212. Vehicles and traffic and chapter 201 sidewalks to be held on April 7th at 6:00 PM.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So Sean, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. The title is rescheduling and discussion of the informational session of the 2020 Beach Parking Pass Policy.
I moved I moved to schedule a public hearing on the 2020 Beach Parking Pass Polit- Policy as amended. On April 7th, 6:00 PM.
Second.
Finally, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Next, believe it or not, we have some good news.
The good news is. Down where Olympia Sports was located in in Wells. The owner of the store, Mark Brunel. Has contacted the American Red Cross and that's going to be set up as a donating site. For the immediate. Short term. It is. Going to be probably three to four weeks, he said, starting today, March 24th. The hours will be 12 noon until 5:00 PM. The American Red Cross will develop protocols and. We urge people on this press release, it says, we urge people to consider donating blood.
Right.
Yeah, I was just that's a great service and. That they're doing and they're very short. I'm starting to read stories about the blood supply really running low, so you can. Try to head down there when they open up. That's but what a great service they're providing there.
Right. Thank you to them.
And again, we want to thank them. We don't want to send mixed messages to stay in place or staying at home. This is one of those reasons that you certainly can get out of the house and head down. So we're not trying to send mixed messages to. Stay at home and not like this. Anything from anybody on the board for good news? We'll take whatever you got.
I don't mind sharing a couple of things. I just go school wise, just because I seem to be the guy that has to tell about the school. Things are going really well. You know, there's always going to be when you start this distant learning or whatever you call it. There's going to be some issues. We've had very few. The teachers are, you know, doing a great job. I I will tell you that anyone who thinks. Teachers or administrators or anyone that they have a day off when this happens, it I I said the other day that. They're working longer hours than they've worked when they're at school. And they're doing a good job of setting it up. I've seen some real Carl, I know your son in law. Did a great video. There's other ones doing some great videos out there that are trying to cheer up the kids. Sean and Emily did a great germ video that was pretty cool. You know, how to how to get rid of germs and stuff like that. So there's some really cool. Things going on in the school system for that. So. Things are going really well there. Couple of there's some kind people out there. We were in the store the other day. My wife was looking for bleach. They were out of bleach and she asked somebody where they found their bleach and the lady said, you know what? I took two. I shouldn't have taken two. I'll give you one of mine. You know, people are out there taking care of each other. There's lunches down at provide the WLCSD. Mr. Daley and Mr. Passanac are providing lunches every day that are at the Public Safety Building, some brown bag lunches. That'll be there every day. It was there. Joanne, correct me if I'm wrong, they were there today even during the snow. They were able to get some down there for people. If you need it, go grab it. I I think there's a lot of good stories out there. There's a lot of, I I get it. We're all under a lot of stress and it's not an easy time. But at the same time, there's a lot of great stories out there going around of people trying to help each other. And, you know, please continue to do that. Don't. We are a friendly town and we are a town that that tries to take care of each other and and let's just continue to do that.
I'd like to say that the senior center, under the direction of Kendra Fowler, our office manager that's down there. She's banning the phones along with a volunteer, one other volunteer person. And there, if any, any seniors have any questions or and she's sending out constant emails to our 400 members, seniors that are there. And some of the restaurants have donated some food that we've been able that they've been able to package and the people can pick it up curbside. And we're making phone calls to seniors that we know that are sheltering at home and staying home. And and it's been a pretty positive so far.
You know, if sorry, Carl, one other thing, just to give people, you know, Kathy, I I agree with you. And then there's some other like people out there trying to organize. And and you don't want to, one of the things you don't want to do is get too many and then cross, you know, I mean, it sometimes it makes it harder on people because they don't know who's calling who or who's doing what and. You know, the senior center has been around a long time. I think you continue that, but. One of the things, not to pat ourselves on the back in any way, but just to give somebody a hint. Cindy and I, we have a small neighborhood by us, 24 homes, let's say, with probably. 17 of them having. Older people. I don't want to say elderly because they'll probably watch it and get mad at me. But we just wrote, we just wrote a letter that put our phone number and our email address on there and said. Basically, do you need something? Do you need groceries? Do you need anything? And went around, even if they were young people, we put it in their door and said, just if you need something, call us. And it's just a small gesture around. And it got people talking in the in the neighborhood. If you just did that in your neighborhood, everybody did that in their neighborhood or a little part of their neighborhood. And just took care of like 10 or 12 people, that would help. We've had nobody reach out. We've had people reach out to say thank you and we're going to keep you in mind if 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 we need it. But it but it's there if they need it. And I think. Staying in your own neighborhood and trying to help out, it might be a way to do things if you're really looking to help out people. So just a thought.
Right. And on social media, it'd be really nice if we could hear some of those stories instead of some of the other things that we have that are more negative. I would love to be able to hear what people are doing to help others and if they have their kids with them when they're doing it and how it happens and what are they talking about with their families? That's the kind of thing that I think we could all use here.
Okay, you took the words out of my mouth from a standpoint. I'm not a social media guy. I don't have the time for it and. I I'd like to issue a challenge because we're we're under good news at this point. And I grew up in a household where my mother beat it into me, literally. You don't have anything nice to say, don't say it at all. But I'd like to challenge all social media venues, everything else. I know everybody has the right to free speech and I'm probably going to get chastised for this. But for one week, I think it would be awesome if we had nothing but good news. Being passed around because the isolationism and the difficulties that people are facing because of this. This virus, I think it would be wonderful if we just had one week reprieve and if you don't have anything good to say. Wait a week. What's a week? Good positive.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, my mom said that too. If you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything.
Your mom did too, Sean.
Ready on good news. All right, moving on to current items. We do not have any need for review accounts payable or payroll warrants. You have open to the public now, so. I'm not quite sure how it's going to go, Chris. I guess we're going to open this up and read some of the questions that folks have at home because. We're now in open to the public.
You've you've covered a lot of them.
Chris, is there a way to if if somebody is, I noticed there's like maybe three or four people that are.
Yeah.
On the Zoom.
Yep.
If they have a question, could they, there's a little button that says raise your hand, right? And they could do that?
They could. Yep.
If anybody has a question or a comment.
Yeah.
And I'm just scrolling down through some of the stuff on the on the Zoom, just to see what people are saying. A question was, how long are we closing the beaches? It was my understanding indefinitely or until further notice? Everyone.
Still further notice.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Good, let's move on.
One question was. Airbnb's and VRBOs and hotels and motels. Are we going to be shutting that service down?
We said that we're going to wait, right, until to see what the governor says Thursday and then revisit this on Tuesday next week, so.
Right. I I think we'll be answering that question next Tuesday, correct, one way or the other. Is that right? That's what I understood.
I understood it. We're going to wait to hear what the governor has to say with the the meeting on Thursday. We'll revisit it next week. The I'll just say discussion up sure mostness.
We do have one question here. I need to know if the town will be giving out occupancy contracts.
They they can call the code enforcement office tomorrow. They're doing limited inspections. And the. Certificate of occupancy. I I can't answer that right.
And it looks like Aaron has a has a question.
Carl, there's still more questions.
Yeah. No, I was just saying the certificate of occupancy. We don't want any hard. There's a way to get it done. We'll find a way to get it.
Yeah, our code officer, Jodine Adams, will answer. Just email her and she'll get back to you within a day on those questions. I'll see her tomorrow and we'll get that out.
Was there another question, Chris?
Aaron White in the Zoom raised her hand, but she's not talking, so it might have been an error. I just. I sent her.
Oh. No, no, I just have a, no, I just have a. Suggestion that is there is some way to put our, you know, the email address of the code enforcement at the end of this or the, you know, so that when people are watching this, they can and they have questions, they can see it right away without them to go look it up somewhere.
I I can't do that.
Yeah, if who's who's email Jody, Jodine?
Well, because John and Desmond, yeah.
It's Jay Adams at wellstown.org.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone had a good question about what are we doing to protect first responders? Do we have a continuing CFPD members to exposure or?
Yes, we do. WIMS has a protocol through sudden main. Their organization, our fire department does also and police department.
Aaron White, if you have a question, I did try to message you to privately. So if you had a question, you could probably type it in that little chat and I'll try to, we'll try to answer it. At any time. We'd see your hands raised, but we don't hear you or see you. So if you're listening. And you want a question answered, just type it in that box, the chat box.
Okay, that's pretty interesting.
There is a question about how we're going to be enforcing beach closure. And I I think we already answered it. I mean, we're not pulling the beaches. I think it's just it's a message to people that please. You stay home. Just like we said, we're we're recommending a stay at home order. So I mean, it's it's a recommendation. It's it's just that beaches are closed, but we're not going to be patrolling them.
All right.
Any other questions? Tim, did you get one from Aaron or no?
No, not yet. So we'll move on. If she asks, we can do it again and let the end.
There's going to be another open to the public. All right, moving on then to update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. First being discussion and action on requesting to the state of Maine for additional agency liquor store in Wells.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, about a month ago, the board took this up and there was a request by a selectman. To contact. The other agency liquor stores in in town. On the possibility that the Board of Selectmen would be. Writing to the state and requesting a additional liquor store. Under the tourist exemption that the State Bureau of Alcohol has. There has been a request filed. To the state that another store would like to offer liquor, liquor sales. And so we wrote to the four store owners that are presently selling state liquor. Hannaford, Spiller's Farm Store, Walgreens and Wells Super Food Market IGA. To get their opinion on that and I received no, no comments.
Thank you, John. I was the one that requested that and I just wanted them to be aware of it. And if they don't have any concerns, I certainly don't have any concerns. I think it's great.
Any other comments from the board?
No, you want a motion?
If no, go ahead. We'll take a motion.
I move to request to the town manager to the state of Maine a tourist community exemption for a fifth agency liquor store in Wells.
Second.
Was that Sean who seconded it?
John got it.
John seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.
Just real quick while we're in between something, there were other questions on the the town of Wells Main Facebook. Stream that we weren't seeing. I think we were all kind of monitoring the Wells Main screen, but there were other questions coming in the town.
Let's go back to that right now then.
The ones I see here are seasonal parks being allowed to open in May. That's the first one I see here.
That's that's going to be a discussion after we have the meeting that takes place with the governor and we'll revisit that probably next Tuesday.
And then I think we already answered this one, but are we allowing what? Well, we said we're waiting on this. Are we allowing water for the campgrounds? And if you're not allowing us to come, are you going to give our tax dollars back? I don't think we ever said we're ever going to stop someone from coming. It's just we're saying that we're not open right now. We're not going to stop you from coming. So we don't need to reimburse tax dollars because we're not stopping anyone from coming in the town. We're just asking that if you come, that you are sheltering in place like the rest of us and that you're not. You know, cross exposure and contaminating other people and that you maintain a self quarantine if you come up here for 14 days or from a highly affected zone. So I think that one. We already answered. And then the last one was, how can I help set up a fund for Wells residents who need? the last one was, how can I help set up a fund for Wells residents who need help?
That's a, I don't know if we're gonna do it through general assistance, but I, I've had discussions with, with folks, including John, that if the government ever passes this stimulus thing and everybody receives a check of two or 2,000 or 2,500, whatever the final number is. But I've had people ask that same question, uh, which I think is a great idea because there's gonna be some of those that are less fortunate that are gonna need some help. So I think, uh, that'll be something that we'll work on. Uh, I'll talk to Jonathan, you know, over the, next week and we'll bring that back for next Tuesday night, uh, as to what then you, we might be able to set up to, to do just that.
Then the last question I saw, and then we can probably move on, is, um, can we dedicate a force of whims to work in Wells only to prevent cross exposure? That was a question from Nathaniel Pierce.
Um, WIMS is a, um, is a separate organization owned by the town. It's a legal corporation with board of directors. We can, uh, I think that's a, a question that the board of directors of WIMS needs to receive.
I think that's gonna be difficult because a lot of the people that work at WIMS are also working full time in other places. And I, I don't think we wanna put people in a position of picking and choosing. That might be difficult to enforce or even talk about.
Right. I'm not sure if discussed, but someone asked if this was a daily update. I don't know if he explained if we can do this every Tuesday.
We normally meet in the first and third Tuesday nights. Uh, for the time being, last week, we made a recommendation that we would be, be meeting every Tuesday until notice. So we'll be meeting at least once a week. Although you can always direct questions or things to the town manager because we're certainly, we don't just work on Tuesday nights. We'll be, we'll be very busy behind the scenes dealing with things on a daily basis. And if need be, we'll get the word out to folks if we have to meet again or if there's gonna be any other briefings.
I got a couple of questions now. Um, not me personally, but people, Erin White did, um, I'll read it the way she put it. So yes, uh, she has a question. What is being done to improve communication to the public weekly? Example, letting people know if there are confirmed cases in town. I believe transparency is important and helps motivate behaviors. This is a global problem. Cases in town make people more aware. They have to take social distancing seriously. There are confirmed cases in New York County and people should be responsible and act accordingly. Communication is key to help alleviate fear. What are the plans for adding info on the website?
I, I don't think we're allowed to do that. Uh, the government, when you look at the CDC Maine, uh, statistics, they give counties only.
Right. I think you can, you can say what county it was in or who or, or anything. HIPAA and all those things come into play with this.
Correct.
And then the next question is, um, Jared Hirschfield, excuse me, uh, should this go on for several months, which is not unlikely? Are there discussions about closing the dock and moorings to recreational boaters? I mean, it's something we're gonna have to, I, I'll, I'll answer in the way I think it's, it's, it's something we'll have to revisit as this hopefully. My hope is that people, we've said this a hundred times. My hope is people listen and, and socially distance and, and stay at home and do these things to prevent that from happening. You're right, Jared. If, if it goes on for several months, then we do have to look at it. But right now, I, I would say that, uh, we're not ready to make that decision right now, in my opinion, but.
And I think we've already, uh, we've already talked about, we're gonna have weekly meetings. So this is, and not just weekly meetings. If there's something that comes up in between our weekly meetings, we can hold emergency sessions to, to address any.
Right. So I think we address it when it comes up. Right.
And in my opinion, now that we're, oh, Sean, were you talking? Sorry.
No, I finished.
And now, now that we're set up the way we are, I, I think that, um, even when we have these emergency meetings, we can do it right on this Zoom and let people know. So that, cause I think this is very informative for people. And where we talk about transparency and stuff like that, unless it's a negative session, of course, I, I get that. But if we're not, we can just set this up. And, and it does change. I mean, even in listening to the governor today, um, she fully admits that by tomorrow morning, we could have changed things. You know what I mean? And, and, uh, you know, I think everybody is. I mean, that, so we, we will, we will do that and, and have emergency meetings. And we'll talk every day, uh, amongst each other here legally, um, and, and make sure that everything's covered. So. And weekly meetings are good right now. We don't usually do that. So that's what people need to understand.
Right.
Someone did ask, and maybe they just want clarification. Well, Waterbury. So does Wells have a shelter in place?
It's a recommendation, not an order.
And it's a stay at home, not a shelter in place, right?
Yeah.
Right. Stay at home. A recommendation to stay at home. Perfect.
Further questions?
I don't have any on this, so.
Okay.
If anything, people, we're gonna have, uh, another open to the public here probably in about 10 minutes. So if you have other questions, we'll take them then. So you can, lending a minute at this point in time. Moving on then, uh, we have discussion and action on the board of selectmen recommendations on the fiscal year 21 town meeting warrant articles. If the board is, uh, in agreement, I, I can go through these very quickly. I think we've seen some of them. It's, uh, estimated revenues, pass through accounts, salary and benefits, operations, potential employee related expenses, town liabilities, capital improvement plan, capital expenditures, expenditures from specific CIP reserve accounts, general assistance, town clerk compensation, preservation land purchase. And there's a second, there's three land purchases. Every, every one of these warrant articles, the budget committee has recommended every one of them, seven in favor and zero against. Is there any, is on any of these warrant articles that you want answered? If not, uh, if you have no questions, are you willing to pass all as recommended?
I would, do you want me to make that motion? Cause we can pass all as recommended. I would make a motion that we pass all as recommended.
Yes, I'll have some discussion further if any questions, we can do that. But if that's your motion, Kathy, do we have a second?
Yeah, I second that. I think we, I think we, uh, heard pretty well in the last couple of meetings, uh, about what the land purchases are and all the other warrant articles. So I'm comfortable with it.
And, and this will be a public hearing on April 7th with the budget committee.
Right.
So I have a motion in a second to pass all as written. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero.
Okay. And are these, um, are these gonna be also listed so that people can see what we're actually voting on right away?
I, I don't have that mechanism right now, but it will be up on the web, um, as part of the public hearing for April 7th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Our next item is discussion of possible financing options for the two capital project, Swamp John Road and the nine B subdivision road reconstruction and drainage work. So let's give this to John.
Um, this chairman members of the board, we have two capital projects out there and perhaps a third and fourth, um, that have just come, come about. The Swamp John Road is certainly from the engineering standpoint, a, about a million dollar project. Uh, we are, uh, working on it ourselves at this point. Uh, we, we need a little better information on, uh, cost. Then we have the, uh, Robinson Road, um, Pine Ledge Drive Drainage and Reconstruction, which, uh, as we've gotten into it over the last year, is a fairly complex drainage, uh, program that involves Ridgethop Lane and exporting the water across nine B down that road. We've been in discussions with the owners of that road and it looks positive. But it is again estimated to be in the ballpark of a million dollars, um, depending on how bids come in. Third, um, and I do apologize, my phone battery is, uh, running down, but, um, the, uh, third one, uh, is the seawall down by the Lafayette Hotel. Um, they have put a lot of pilings in to secure their seawall through a state permit. Uh, we went down to look at our side of the seawall and it certainly looks as if it needs, um, a lot of attention. Um, and we have a structural engineer looking at that. Lastly, uh, the state, uh, has reported to us that the bridge, uh, that is underneath Drake's Island Road as you go down the road by the, um, I call it the arts artist, uh, house. That is a wood bridge underneath there and that is, uh, in, um, different stages of, uh, serious, uh, updating, uh, capital, uh, project there. So we have a structural engineer for this, uh, seawall and this bridge. Uh, they are going to make their report to us later, uh, this spring. So what our recommendation is right now is to, uh, first prioritize Swamp John Road as a road that can be undertaken, uh, and repaired by this fall and utilize the, uh, inland golf reserve as well as, uh, another reserve account. And, and hopefully, uh, all four capital projects might raise, rise to the level of a small bond going out. And I would recommend that we reimburse these reserve accounts through the bond if we, um, do it that way. In, in, uh, the end, what, what I'm recommending is that we do Swamp John Road. And then this, this summer, with all the information hopefully in hand, decide if you're going to go with a bond in November. And, and do it that way.
I don't, uh, I, I don't see how we can do this many projects. We don't have the, the reserve accounts set up unless we bond. So at least this way here, we can start getting some work done. Um, the biggest question that I've had all along, which it appears has been answered, that, uh, the payback of the transfer station loan, that if that did not get completely paid back, I was asking if that would affect our bond rating and the interest rate. The answer to that is probably not. So that, uh, what this will do for us is get the projects somewhat started and underway so that we can get them accomplished and get, uh, all the bond information put together, which is gonna take some time. And then re, as John said, reimburse the accounts that we pulled the money from because, uh, John says it's a small bond, but, uh, small meaning it's not going to be for the faint of heart, but it, it could be, uh, seven figures and, and more. So. I would concur with what he says. Questions?
So we, what we would do now is, is actually move the Swamp John forward and use the inland, the inland golf reserve, correct?
Right.
Right. Would that, would that completely finish the Swamp John?
On those, if you pulled the, uh, money out of inland and, uh, work with Jody on, on, on maybe one or two other reserve accounts, it would finish it. Um, we, we probably need town meeting approval to, uh, draw down those, uh, reserve accounts. And what I would recommend on April 7th, when the budget committee is, is virtually with us, we, we get them to make that, uh, recommendation as an additional article.
Okay. And then at that point, we can all agree and we'd be voting on it and that would go forward to town meeting. That's a good, yeah. That's good because I'd like to see Swamp John done. You know, I definitely would.
And just to reiterate, we're, we're gonna be fixing the base material on Swamp John, correct?
Yeah. We, we've placed a layer of that down. It needs to be built up two or three more inches and a lot, under drainage, uh, to be put in, um, and then, uh, follow the engineer's recommendations.
Right. So what we see here, the engineer's recommendations, that's what we're looking at, correct? To do the base, rebuild it and go, hold it right up and put, and then pave it. I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
Say, say that again, Kathy. I'm sorry.
We're going to put the, we're gonna do, we're gonna follow the engineer, what they gave us for, um, what they recommend for us to do. We're gonna put the base in, we're gonna build it up and then we're going to pave it all, right?
Yes. But the drainage, the drainage is the most important part.
Yes, right, right, right. The range along, yes, right. So when, cause we're gonna be building it up higher.
Correct. And to deal with the, uh, water flowing under the road in the swamp area.
Right. Okay. I think that's a great idea. Now, the motion that you would want is to mo, move that forward first and then, um, or, and then place it on the April 7th as a public hearing?
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend a motion to set up in a, uh, warrant article, uh, to recommend that those phases.
Okay. I make a motion that we set up a warrant auto, article to, um, to deal with the Swamp John, uh, process and building of it and with the, uh, and work as a, on a public hearing on April 7th.
Second.
The only other thing is that to analyze and look into the other, at minimum, three, three or four other projects, that's inclusive of that motion.
Yeah. Wait, and so I just, we're not, we're gonna, not gonna do a public hearing on those, right? Until we're gonna work through the summit to find out more information on that?
Right. We're just, just motion to, to move Swamp John Road ahead with the way.
Right. That's gonna go on the warrant and that's, you know, that's, and, um, we're gonna work to put that on the warrant. But the other two, the other recommendations for bonding and everything, we're not putting that on the warrant.
Not yet. No, just wanna make sure.
Do we have to move to table those?
I make a motion to table those for further discussion. We're not ready to do anything, move anything more on that.
So Sean, did you second it to Kathy's first motion?
Yeah, I'll second as amended that we're tabling the other three points.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. Thank you.
No. Well, it has to be plugged in, so that's okay. No, no.
Our next item is, there's no town manager or selectman need for updates on personnel committee assignments and resignation. So we'll move to, uh, back to, for as long as we can with John's phone running out of battery.
Open the public, okay, yeah, 10 minutes.
Do you have any new questions to anybody? Chris, any new questions?
I'm not seeing any on my end. No, no, no new questions.
And I don't see any on the town of Wells stream either.
No, I'm looking on the group chat. I don't see.
Like a five or 10 second delay. So maybe we just give it a couple of seconds in case someone's realizing that we're just now open to the public.
Okay.
Well, well, I would say in this, I was, I was happy when, uh, uh, Mr. Shabbat got up. I was afraid he was going to the restroom like that guy did during that other town meeting, uh, a couple of days. I think that he walked around with, and I scared the death of him.
Oh, my God. Yeah, I would, I, she did well to hold herself together as much.
The other part that was great was I, I don't know if you guys saw it, but I think Sarah Moody, um, didn't realize she was on screen. Cause when she looked over at that, she'd been on about 20 minutes. When she looked over and realized she was on screen, she slammed her computer down.
Uh, if no other questions have come in at this point in time, we'll go right to the town manager's report, should you have one.
Um, at, at this point, uh, with my battery, um, no.
So do you want a motion to adjourn?
Please.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody in their efforts to make this happen tonight.
Thank you very much.
Stay healthy.
Yeah, stay healthy and safe. Yeah.
Nice evening. Stay healthy.
All right. Take care, everybody.
See you later. Ending the meeting.
Bye.